Silence your electronic devices and please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Conley, absent. Councilmember Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens, absent. Mayor Potem?
Here.
Mayor MacJohnson?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our first item of business tonight is the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I'll read that this evening. Whereas October is annually recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas progress continues to be made toward violence prevention, domestic and intimate partner violence remains a serious issue affecting all people, regardless of age, race, ethnicity, sex, gender, socioeconomic status, literacy, sexuality, ability, religion, culture, and immigration status. And whereas domestic and intimate partner violence survivors are deprived of dignity, security, and autonomy with the systemic use of control and power through physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic abuse. And whereas children exposed to domestic violence can experience long-term consequences, including difficulty at school, substance abuse, behavioral problems in adolescents, and serious adult health problems. Whereas Humboldt Domestic Violence Services has been serving Humboldt County since 1977 to continuously support all those living with or escaping abuse. Whereas all survivors deserve access to culturally responsive prevention programs and services to increase their safety and self-sufficiency. HDVS enlists a diverse array of allies, agencies, and community members in supporting survivors of domestic and intimate partner violence. Whereas only together can we change the health and safety of our community by challenging the societal norms that perpetuate violence. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Fortuna recognizes the month of October 2025 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The council celebrates HDVS's 48 years of effort to improve community safety by breaking the cycle of domestic and intimate partner violence. Signed this sixth day of October 2025 at City of Fortuna. And I'll bring this down to you.
Good evening. On behalf of Humboldt Domestic Violence Services, thank you for declaring October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic violence affects every community, every age, every background. It's a problem that thrives in silence and in darkness. That's why we as a community need to speak out and shed light on this problem that affects many households. Increased awareness and education leads to action and prevention. The more we educate ourselves, the more help we can provide. Humboldt Domestic Violence Services offers hope, education, and action. For more than 40 years, this agency has provided a 24-hour emergency phone line, counseling, emergency housing, and advocacy. The staff help with transportation, court visits, temporary restraining orders, and much more. Every month, HDVS receives between 100 and 200 calls regarding violence in the home. In an average month, HDVS houses several families temporarily seeking shelter from an abuser. By shining a light on this community problem, we can create safer surroundings for the adults and children who still suffer in the darkness of domestic violence. With the support of our community, HDVS can continue to provide hope and break the cycle of violence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe we've got a couple of people here that would like to make some public comment and that are in a time crunch. And if they'd like to step forward now, this...
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Cliff Clendenon. And so on behalf of the Apple Harvest Festival Committee, I'd like to thank the city for all the work they did to make it a real successful event last Saturday. I think there were at least four city departments involved. And as usual, always a few little hitches, but a lot of work. And if without the City of Fortuna's involvement and street closures and the police department and a lot of clerical pieces, it wouldn't happen as well as it does. So I think it was a successful day and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Justin Franco-Forey, President, Fortuna Police Employees Association. I'd like to start off tonight. I was here, I believe, on September 8th was the last meeting I was at. Made a public comment. Councilmember Stevens reached out to me and him and I met and had a conversation to talk about our staffing crisis. And on behalf of myself and the members of the FPA, we'd like to thank him publicly for that. So as promised, I'm back again to give an update on how many hours of overtime our members continue to work to provide the basic patrol coverages for the City of Fortuna. The last update I gave, we started on June 29th. We'd worked a total of 2,136 hours, 2,136.25 hours of overtime. Since then, we've added an additional 826.25 hours for a total of 2,963 hours of overtime. And I believe that's in a 10- or 12-week period. So I'm going to continue to bring this information forward until something changes. And I want to be clear, this is not a recruiting issue. This is a retention problem. So let me put that in perspective. The last time somebody retired out of the Fortuna Police Department was January of 2020. Since then, we have lost 13 personnel to other agencies or not making the training program. So on average, we're losing two per year. Coming up in the next five years, we're going to have five people who are retirement eligible. Three of those have already hit retirement age. When they depart, we're going to lose approximately 100 years of law enforcement experience. Gone. My question is, how, if we can't even keep up with people leaving for other agencies, how are we going to keep up with these additional retirements? Again, why I'm up here and why I'm frustrated about the situation is because the situation is not a secret. It's been talked about for years. It's been projected. City leaders have been told about it and nothing's been done. We've maintained the status quo. So what the status quo looks like to our members? It's an extra 20 hours a week. It's bringing your kids in on a school night at midnight so we can take a problem off the street and take them to jail and they sleep on our couch in dispatch. It's feeling guilty for taking a day off or trying to ask for a few hours off so you can go to a family event or spend your actual day off with your family. Something's got to change. I know there's talks about a bunch of different options for the city. We can't wait. This is going to continue. There's more people leaving. There's more people looking to leave on their way out so this problem's going to continue. I know we have two people that are going to be getting off the training program. But I would almost bet if nothing changes this time next year, we will be at a net zero gain of officers on the street or down even more. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. It's not very pleasant.
Hi. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I wanted to talk on domestic violence, but I also wanted to wrap that back to your police department, which is one a very effective police department in Humboldt County and protects your city. A lot of those midnight calls he talked about are domestic violence calls. I was in a domestic violence marriage for 16 years. I was one of the persons that called the domestic hotline. I didn't talk because I didn't have enough nerve. Was a young mom of three children. And domestic violence, if you don't think it's a community problem, it is everybody's problem. It affects everyone and lots of communities, especially in small counties like ours. We really want to thank the council for bringing the recognition forward. My board tomorrow with my colleagues will be doing the same recognition. And it really does take a village to, for people to recognize that it's not their fault and it's something to not be ashamed of. And by doing these recognitions and getting the information out there and to say that it's okay to ask for help and really want that for your family is part of surviving it and making it acceptable for people to come forward and ask for help. So I just want to thank the council so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I feel it's appropriate to get up after the association president spoke here. It is a real problem. The things he talked about do exist. Additionally, I want to acknowledge that we've got employees and families from the police department here because they're concerned. He did hit the nail on the head that it is a retention issue. I do think we need to be open to look at whatever we can do to address that. And I do have a lot of the same concerns as him. But I know it takes courage to get up and be the voice. So I do appreciate the employees doing that and I appreciate everything they're doing, all the hours they're putting in. And that was a real thing that he mentioned. With a child at midnight sleeping on a dispatch couch so we had somebody to cover for a transport when somebody needed to go to jail.
Again, thank you. It's something to think about and wrap our heads around. So now we come to the consent calendar. We have two items. City Council minutes from September 24th and City Council minutes from the special meeting on the 29th.
Motion to adjourn consent calendar? I mean, motion to approve. Motion to adjourn. Let's just go home.
I second that motion of approval of the minute, of the consent calendar.
All right. Motion to, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay. Now on to City Council business and we will switch A and B. So we'll start with the introduction and first reading of Ordinance 2025-777. Do we have staff report?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So this is the introduction and first reading of Ordinance 2025-777. And this ordinance is going, will change Chapter 2.5 of the Fortuna Municipal Code. And that chapter sets the city's purchasing system, which is essentially how vendors are chosen from items included in the city budget. And so the last holistic review of this section of the municipal code was 1997. And so staff have identified a number of portions that could better align with existing laws and best practices. And additionally, we contracted with Claire Gibson, a procurement law attorney, to review our proposed changes and ensure they were in compliance with current laws. So the proposed ordinance is really broken down into three parts. The procurement of goods, the procurement of public works contracts, and the procurement of professional and general services. So I'm just going to quickly talk about each of those three items. So the first one, procurement of goods, is governed by Government Code Section 54202. And that section does not require formal bidding. Our current ordinance does require formal bidding. And our city charter also does not require formal bidding. So staff is proposing to change the procurement of goods in our City of Fortuna ordinance to allow the procurement of goods to be separate from the procurement of public works contracts, which currently they're combined. And so that will allow the procurement of goods to be purchased by informal bidding, which is really the request of quotes and potentially negotiating with those vendors for anything above $5,000. And this will be a far more efficient use of city time and resources. And we additionally think that not only will informal bidding not result in higher prices, but we think we can negotiate, actually get lower prices. Because currently, when we go out for the procurement of goods, not a lot of vendors are used to that formal bidding process for goods. And so we're just not getting a lot of interest. And so if we can just get quotes and negotiate, we think we'll get better prices. So the second section, public works contracts. So as a city charter, we have the abilities to set our own bidding thresholds. Those thresholds have not been updated in over 20 years. They're currently at $25,000 or more. And so the proposed ordinance sets bidding thresholds at the values used in the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, or what is commonly referred to as KUPCA. And the KUPCA bid thresholds are updated every five years based on inflation. And currently, those are... And currently, those uh are set at contracts under $75,000, can be purchased by force account or negotiating. Contracts between $75,000 and $220,000 need to be purchased through informal bid procedure, and contracts above $220,000 to be purchased through the formal bid procedure. And so we do feel like this is an appropriate uh threshold for the city of Fortuna, and currently sixty-two percent of all California cities have adopted the CUPCA rates. And so uh we, we feel like it's kind of the majority of cities, and we should be kind of following that same. And then finally, the third section, professional and general services. So it's to align with the applicable government code provisions, this needs to be separated into two different subsections. The first one is architectural and engineering services. And we must always go through the RFP, Request for Proposal, or RFQ, Request for Qualifications process, per government code, section 37103. So there's no, the, the threshold essentially zero dollars. And then all other professional and general services, we are proposing through this ordinance to align those closely with the public work con- contract thresholds. And so anything under $75,000 uh could be purchased by quote and direct negotiation, and anything over $75,000 could be purchased, would need to be purchased through the RFP or RFQ process. The financial impact, we anticipate a significant amount of staff time being reduced uh to procure goods and services. And we also anticipate reduced advertising and other costs associated with the formal bidding process, which is quite extensive. The automatic inflation increases to the cost thresholds for formal uh public work contract bidding will reduce the need for staff to bring forward revisions to the Fortuna Municipal Code in the future. And then finally, did wanna note that any purchased goods or services will still need to be included in the council-approved budget or council-approved supplemental budget requests. So the changes to this ordinance will not allow staff to purchase anything additional or extra that is not already included in the city's budget. And so that, with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor and happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions from?
The first item, um, item A, doesn't that have to be approved before we do this one?
So the ordinance really takes precedent over the policy, so we're gonna, if we get the ordinance first, then the policy will kind of follow after that.
So if the policy's not, not approved, though, the ordinance can't be?
Uh, no, if, the ordinance can be approved no matter what. The policy cannot be approved if the ordinance is not approved.
So, so I'm confused, then why are we doing the second one first?
The, so the ordinance is the Fortuna Municipal Code law, and the policy is the implementation of that law. So you can have the code, the new code that you're amending, um, and that could be adopted, and then your council could choose not to implement the implementing policy change or the, s- does, sorry, does that make sense?
Kinda.
The policy is the implementation of the code.
Okay.
This lays out the lu- the limits and how it's gonna move forward, and this is how the city will implement the ordinance.
No, I think that it's important that we review this and not wait twenty-plus years to review this, and working with the state of California and procurement, I understand the importance of having to review this more frequently than not. So thank you for doing this.
And that's one of the reasons it's very forward-thinking and planning ahead to tie it all to CUPCA, because that updates every five years, and we don't have to look at the limits, we don't have to look at the new laws. It will all be because the ordinance points back to CUPCA, and that's our guiding document and regulations. So, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, will entertain a motion?
I make a motion to introduce and conduct a first reading of ordinance number 2025-777, read by title only, and continue the public hearing to October 20th, 2025, to conduct the second reading.
Second.
And I believe this a roll call vote.
Absent. Um, Diaz?
Yes.
And Trent?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. So now we will look at the approved revisions to the Purchasing Procedures section of Fortuna's Administrative Policy Manual.
Yes, good evening again, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So now that the ordinance has been approved, the purchasing policies are what carry out those, that ordinance. And so uh the revisions to the purchasing procedures are to align with those changes. In addition, staff are proposing to increase the supervisor approval limit from $1,000 to $2,000, increase the department head limit from $5,000 to $10,000, and increase the city manager limit from $30,000 to $100,000. And additionally, and lastly, uh, we are also proposing to make a change to the definition of who a supervisor is uh by removing the police office supervisor from the list and adding the police lieutenant to the supervisor list. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor and happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from Council?
I met with staff earlier today on this 'cause I was concerned about the, the limits, but explained to me it makes a lot of sense because it's gonna make the pop process quicker and easier to negotiate and maybe for better prices. So I don't have a problem with it.
I agree. Having to work in purchasing, I, I know the paperwork that you guys are saving, so, and the amount of signatures back and forth. So streamlining the process will be ideal and then saving your guys' time, so yeah, no problem for me.
Okay, any comment, public comment?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-21 and read by title only.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second?
Roll call vote? Roll call vote? Um, Mayor Protem?
Yeah.
Do we have to read the title?
Okay. I'm gonna read this, sorry. Approve the revisions to the Purchasing Procedures section of the City of Fortuna's Administrative Policies and Procedures Manual, resolution 25, 2025-21? And the roll call vote? Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Carlos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so that's our business items, and now we are to our study session.
Mayor and Councilmembers, um, today before you, we have a nitrous oxide and tobacco retail license study session. On August 18th of this year, your council had the first study session on nitrous oxide and tobacco retail license, and public health staff have returned for a second study session. So we have Katie Jo Slaughter, Brianna Sherlock, and Jay Macedo with us this evening, and they will take it from here.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us here tonight. My name is Brianna Sherlock. I'm the manager for the Healthy Communities in Wick Division with Humboldt County Public Health. And with me tonight are?
Hello, my name is Katie Jo Slaughter. I work with Brianna at the Healthy Communities Division of the Public Health Branch. I also serve as the Humboldt County Substance Use Prevention Coordinator. And I am a Fortuna parent. I am deeply motivated by this work as both a parent in this community and also a cheer coach. I'm with the kids a lot, and keeping them safe from recreational nitrous oxide use and commercial tobacco use is very important to me in my both professional and personal work.
And I'm uh Jay Macedo, and I'm with the Public Health, um, um, sorry, Partnership for um Health and Equity and Inclusion, PHEI, and I am a community partner. And um I was with a, just finished up a past project around a state-funded nicotine project, and I worked with um the Eel River Valley Tobacco Retailers and had, had done store observations and uh tobacco education here in Fortuna as well.
So the data and the research around recreational nitrous oxide are really catching up with a lot, with what a lot of us have known anecdotally in Humboldt County about recreational nitrous oxide use. Um, there's a few key points that are guiding public health's work around nitrous oxide. Um, one is, we know from the California Healthy Kids Survey that our kids are already trying inhalants. Um, I did not bring my glasses, so I, okay, thank you. Um, four percent of seventh graders and eleventh graders in Humboldt County report that they've already tried inhalants, which is concerning from a public health perspective. Um, in 2021, um, my program Substance Use Prevention undertook a community survey. Um, young people and community members both highlighted that nitrous oxide misuse in litter should be a priority area for our program. Um, and then finally, in May 2024, we had a fatal pedestrian collision involving a driver under the influence of nitrous oxide in the city of Eureka. This was a watershed moment from, for a lot of folks working in the prevention sphere in Humboldt. We're also here today to talk about tobacco retail licensing. Um, here is some data points that are guiding public health's work around commercial tobacco and vaping use in Humboldt County. And here I wanna pause and just note that commercial tobacco use is separate and distinct from sacred or ceremonial tobacco use among our tribal communities. So today we're talking about commercial tobacco use. Um, we know, because our public health branch is collecting a lot of data, we love data, that in Humboldt County, smoking commercial tobacco causes or contributes to thirty-four percent of all deaths in the county. We know that twenty-five percent of our ninth grade students in Humboldt County have already tried vape products. Um, and we know that sixty-seven percent of our Humboldt County eleventh graders report that it is fairly or very easy to obtain vape or e-cigarette products. Those last two data points are both, again, from the 2021 to 2023 California Healthy Kids Survey that our kids take in the schools, so fairly recent data about um their commercial tobacco use. So like I said previously, um, data and research are starting to catch up with what a lot of us already know in the community about nitrous oxide use, and that it has a cascade of short and long-term effects on the brain and the body. Again, I'm gonna pause, and I'm gonna point out the picture in this slide. A lot of the photo content in this slide deck was captured by our staff. I actually took this photo of nitrous oxide packaging litter at an apartment complex near where I live with my daughter, um, in Camden Heights. And this is an apartment complex that is full of young families with children, so nitrous oxide litter is a problem in the city of Fortuna. But going back to the short-term effects of recreational nitrous oxide use, um, this is from the Alcohol and Drug Foundation in 2025. So it can cause dizziness and lightheadedness, blurred vision, sweating, tiredness, fainting. Um, in extreme cases, it can cause heart attack. And then, again, the research is starting to establish that there can be significant long-term effects from using nitrous oxide recreationally. Um, long-term effects, there's a long list here. Um, I'm just gonna kind of touch on some of them. I think the most significant that we're learning about more and more is neurological damage, sometimes can be permanent from recreational um and problematic nitrous oxide use. Um, it can cause memory loss, vitamin B12 um depletion, which increases the risk of brain and nerve damage. Um, and then, like I said, there's a whole other cascade of effects that we're starting to see in the community. Um, this picture um I also took is a picture of a sort of substance use fire pile at the mouth of the Van Duzen um near Alton. Um, again, you guy, everyone may have already seen nitrous oxide canisters throughout this valley, but it's very common throughout Humboldt County.
So just to define a little bit what we're talking about when we discuss nitrous oxide, um, historically, when we thought of nitrous oxide, we were thinking of these little canisters or whipits, as they're sometimes called. These are small metal cartridges that contain compressed nitrous oxide gas. And in order to release the nitrous oxide that's inside of them, you need what's called a cracker, which is the second picture here. And this is a metal container that cracks the canister and dispenses nitrous oxide gas. And then what we're seeing more and more in the retail environment now are these tanks of nitrous oxide, and these range anywhere from small to extra-large tanks. And some of the larger ones even come equipped with backpack straps. Um, they come in different flavored varieties. You can purchase flavored mouthpieces to go on them, um, and they have uh the ability to dispense a steady stream of nitrous oxide gas without having to use a canister. You can just get it straight from the tanks. So I'm not gonna go in-depth about our implementation timeline, um, but this work started back, uh, well, as Katie Jo mentioned, there was a survey back in 2021. Um, and then our Board of Supervisors, including Supervisor Bushnell, um, have been a champion of this work um in the unincorporated areas of the county. Um, and so in January 2024, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors directed public health to address retail sales of ni- of nitrous, recreational nitrous oxide through education and policy approaches. And in June 2024, we received funding from the Substance Use Block Grant from SAMSA to be able to do this work. And so since then, we've been doing um environmental prevention and policy work around this in unincorporated and partnering with the different cities throughout Humboldt County.
Sorry, everyone. With the funding we received um from SAMSA, our staff was able to engage in a robust um retail landscape analysis of where recreational nitrous oxide is being sold throughout Humboldt County. Um, we were able to work closely with partners like Jay, who's here tonight, to do a retail landscape analysis in the Eel River Valley, which we'll talk about shortly. Um, so between October 2024 and April 2025, we conducted a hundred and forty-four retail observations throughout Humboldt County. We did not work in any of our tribal areas, um, just out of respect that they are sovereign nations, but like I said, we did do observations in unincorporated Humboldt County and the city jurisdictions. And so from those visits, we observed nitrous oxide products in plain sight at twenty-four of the a hundred and forty-four retail outlets. And it's good to note here, so we did located in plain sight observations. So that was our team walking into a retail establishment, taking a quick scan of what could be seen. Um, we did not go into back rooms, um, into locked cabinets, behind closed doors. Um, our priority was staff safety. I can say from doing all of these retail observations, a lot of the retail environments where they are selling nitrous oxide don't feel particularly safe and are definitely somewhere I would not want any of our kids to visit. Um, of those twenty-four outlets, eighteen had all of the paraphernalia and products that Brianna talked about. Five only had crackers and canisters, and we had one retail outlet that only had canisters. Um, for the most part, again, for sa- staff safety, we only disclosed the observations at thirty-four of the a hundred and forty-four retail outlets. So this is our overall data related to what kind of retail outlets are selling nitrous oxide in Humboldt County. We have a chef store on the safety corridor that is selling nitrous oxide. nitrous oxide for culinary use. There is a home goods store in the Eel River Valley that was selling a high-end cracker and canister product intended for culinary use. We have three independent retail outlets where we saw nitrous oxide, one sex shop in a city jurisdiction, and two glass-blowing studios that, interestingly, also sold nitrous oxide products. The majority of the retail outlets that sold nitrous oxide were smoke shops that also sell tobacco, which is another reason why we're here to talk about both nitrous oxide and tobacco retail licensing. And then we had one corner market in a city jurisdiction that sold nitrous oxide. And I'm going to turn it over to Jay.
Yeah, so as part of the countywide retail landscape, in February of 2025, we visited 28 retail outlets here in the Eel River Valley, including the 17 tobacco retail outlets that are in Fortuna. Nitrous oxide products that were in plain sight, following that protocol that Katie Jo talked about, we observed that at four of the 28 ERV retail outlets that we had observed. All three of the smoke shops in Fortuna sold nitrous oxide openly. The home goods store was the other one that was in Ferndale, but it was intended for home-based culinary use. The way it was packaged and presented, it wasn't similar to what the smoke shops were selling. Outside of Fortuna, we had have anecdotal evidence that another retail outlet may be selling nitrous products out of plain sight, but we did not see it when we observed. There's community members and leaders that have shared that residents from other jurisdictions in the ERV travel to the outlets here in Fortuna to be able to purchase the recreational nitrous products.
So to summarize, some of our key findings from these observations were that recreational nitrous oxide products are readily available and located in plain sight in most jurisdictions, including the city of Fortuna, throughout Humboldt County, that the majority of retail outlets that sell recreational nitrous oxide products are smoke shops, and that the retail outlets selling nitrous oxide also have a larger variety of flavored nicotine and tobacco products on their shelves, which is now illegal under California law, and that the community has shared anecdotally that there are other retailers that are likely selling nitrous not located in plain sight. So what we saw that was located in plain sight was just the tip of the iceberg.
So as I mentioned, there were the 28 outlets that we observed here in the Eel River Valley. And for, just for some context, and I tried to say it, but it didn't come out the way that I intended in the beginning when I did my introduction, but I had a past project with the Health and Social Policy Institute, Communities Addressing Nicotine Can, and we had been working in the Eel River Valley and with the retailers since 2020. And so when I first started in Fortuna in 2020, there were only 15 retailers, tobacco retailers, and only one of them was a smoke shop. And then over the years, there were two more smoke shops that popped up in Fortuna. And also, so now there's like a total of three smoke shops and an increase of 17 tobacco retailers here in Fortuna. So we found that those, that the four, four Eel River Valley tobacco retail outlets, the three here in Fortuna and one in Riodell were selling flavored tobacco products that are illegal to sell now, flavored tobacco products in California. In 2022, we had youth between the ages of 18 and 20 were sent to local stores in the jurisdictions here at the bottom in Fortuna, Ferndale, Arcata, and unincorporated Humboldt, and to see if they could purchase tobacco products at, commercial tobacco products at these local stores. In 2022, the state rate for under the, under, sales to those under 21 for the North Coast area was 13%. And that included, the North Coast region as defined by the state included Delnort, Humboldt, Lake Mendocino, Napa, and Sonoma. So it wasn't just like the Humboldt area, it was the North Coast region, but that was 13%. And as you can see from the stats here in Fortuna, Ferndale, Arcata, and unincorporated, that they're, they were well above that in 2022, that same year, that it was 13% for the, the North Coast, rest of the North Coast region, so.
Okay, so the Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance, as Katie Jo mentioned, 34% of all deaths in Humboldt County are caused or attributed to tobacco use in Humboldt County, and tobacco use is the number one cause of preventable death in California. There are over 230 cities and counties in California, including unincorporated Humboldt County, that have local tobacco retail licensing ordinances. And the purpose of these ordinances is to prevent youth access to commercial tobacco and to enforce local, state, and federal laws. Oftentimes, without a tobacco retail licensing ordinance, there are, there's no local enforcement structure or long-term funding for local control over tobacco sales. And just as an example of the success that the Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance has had in unincorporated Humboldt, before the TRL, over 60% of stores in unincorporated Humboldt were selling flavored tobacco and nicotine products, and that was after the state law had passed. And since passing the TRL in 2023, now less than 5% of the stores in unincorporated Humboldt are out of compliance. So we have staff who have done several rounds of outreach, education, and enforcement in relation to the Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance. And Public Health's recreational nitrous oxide landscape analysis, the majority of retail outlets that are selling nitrous oxide products also sell commercial tobacco products, as you saw in that slide previously. So some reasons that local tobacco retail licensing ordinances and nitrous oxide ordinances are important are that they help close loopholes in state codes, such as the Health and Safety Code. They help protect youth through limited accessibility to these products. They help provide enforcement for local, state, and federal laws. They provide an opportunity for us to define control locally and to build a community locally to work directly with retailers. It's great to have a unified policy approach between unincorporated Humboldt County and city jurisdictions, because what we're seeing is, for example, a retailer who has outlets in multiple locations, if there's an ordinance in one area but not another, they'll send their products that are not supposed to be being sold from one area to another where there's, the enforcement is not happening. And like I mentioned earlier, locally, some of our recent policies in Humboldt County are the Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance in unincorporated, which was passed in July, and there are several other city jurisdictions currently considering it, and the nitrous oxide ordinance, which has been adopted in unincorporated Humboldt, as well as the cities of Arcata, Ferndale, and Riodell. And then we're bringing it to you all, of course, and the city of Eureka is also working on a nitrous oxide ordinance. We've also been working closely with our tribal partners, which I'll let Jay talk a little bit more about.
Yeah, so we've presented to the United Indian Health Services, and several member tribes have a mention interest in the more information on the nitrous oxide, as well as the commercial tobacco policy work. And so part of that unified approach would be not only with city and county, but also with tribal jurisdictions, too. So we would look for a parity across all of those if we can work on that. So, and my current agency, the Partnership for Health Equity and Inclusion, we are offering our technical assistance and services, and also DHS, or Public Health, also Humboldt County, is also willing to help with tribes to work on nitrous oxide and commercial tobacco policies. So, thank you.
That's it. If you'd like, we can talk a little bit about what the provisions are in the county's nitrous oxide ordinance and tobacco retail licensing ordinance, or we can open it up to questions.
You might want to touch on those.
Absolutely. So the county's nitrous oxide ordinance, and it's the same ordinance, has been adopted in Arcata, Ferndale, and unincorporated. City of Eureka is planning to bring forward the same one. Riodell's is similar, but with an exemption for culinary. So the nitrous oxide ordinance is a total sales ban on nitrous oxide and associated paraphernalia in Humboldt County. There are no exemptions for culinary or automotive. The Board of Supervisors and several of the other councils decided to take that approach to make sure that there couldn't be any online sales, for example, things of that nature. It is still permissible for use in healthcare, dental, and pharmacy, where it has legitimate uses, and when it comes pre-contained in a food product, such as prepackaged whipped cream. The county has several enforcement mechanisms. First, there's the misdemeanor, and then a public nuisance. Because the county has the Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance, the Board of Supervisors opted to add a provision for the revocation of a tobacco retail license if the retailer is found to be selling nitrous oxide, and then finally a revocation of the business license. And then in terms of the Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance, this includes provisions, like we said, on the retail sales of recreational nitrous oxide. It has requirements for putting pricing. It has requirements for proximity and density of tobacco retailers, and so that they can't be near youth-oriented facilities and discouraging that. And then, of course, enforcing state laws, such as the flavor ban, and making sure they have the State Act sign, which says that you need to be 21 years or older to purchase tobacco in California. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have to be a certain age to purchase the nitrous oxide?
So it is currently illegal to purchase nitrous oxide for recreational use or to sell it with the intended purpose of someone using it recreationally, per the California Penal Code, but there's no enforcement mechanism for that.
So culinary, there's no age limit to purchasing culinary?
No.
You mentioned that Eureka is looking to implement something like this, so that would eliminate the only store that is selling it for culinary purposes on the corridor, right?
That's actually in unincorporated Humboldt, so that ordinance went into effect in July. Yeah, I believe it went into effect in July. Yeah, it's in unincorporated Eureka.
I did the retail observation at the culinary store in the corridor, the U.S. Chef Food Store. That store has had an historical and ongoing problem with community members visiting them, hoping to purchase their culinary nitrous oxide for recreational use. And they had already implemented a lot of, like, internal policy to try to limit that. And they were doing a good job, but still, wherever there is culinary nitrous oxide being sold, there is the potential for community members to come to try to purchase it for recreational use.
Is there any public comment on this item?
First and foremost, thank you for coming and presenting again to our council. As stated previously, this is an issue. I talked last time about an arrest. It had a homecoming week this last week. Thursday night, down at the school. Next day, Friday, I get a text from a city employee that, right outside the high school, along 12th Street, several large canisters in the brush of nitrous oxide. There is no reason it needs to be in our community. As the chief of police, as a parent, as a community member, I am saying, please implement the strictest, you know, policies that we can. Give us the tools to address them. If it's adding in the administrative citations that come with a hefty fine, rejecting their license, all of that, I think we have a duty to protect our community. And I'd like you to please take action on it.
Thank you.
I'm going to agree with Chief on that.
Hi, again, council and mayor. Since October, since October 2025, the counties that have adopted a nitrous ordinance in California are Orange County, Humboldt County, San Mateo County, Santa Cruz County, Mendocino County. And inside those counties are also jurisdictions that have adopted nitrous ordinance, nitrous oxide ordinances. That's a mouthful. You asked about the provision, the state law that prevents you from buying nitrous oxide, and your co-council Stevens talked about it before in the last meeting. It's 38-1B, and it says that if you identify that you're going to buy nitrous oxide for an inhalant, then it is against the law. But you first have to identify that you're using it for an inhalant. And I don't know anybody that's going to go in and say, I'm buying it for nitrous to inhale, so don't sell it to me. So that, that, that law really doesn't work very well. They talked about a lot of youth and young kids that use nitrous oxide. That is not where it stops. It, it has a huge effect and a huge use of 20, 30, and 40-year-olds. I have had, in my district, that includes your city, I can't even count how many parents, family members, grandmas, have called me and said, moms and dads of adult children that have said, my daughter's paralyzed. My son died. My son died with a cracker in his hand. Please do something. This was a, one of the key things that I, when I first became supervisor, I became aware of. I knew about it prior to then. Southern Humboldt, which was my community at the time, I knew it was very prevalent. I had an employee that was 22 years old that died with a cracker in his hand. Another kid that I hauled on my school bus died in a basement, huffing on that cracker, froze his lungs. And it is prevalent in all age groups, not just children, but it really needs to be not so readily available. Right now, if you're 10 years old and you go into a store and you say, I'm buying that little cartridge, my mommy's going to make whipped cream. They're going to sell it to you as a 10-year-old. I encourage you, please, I beg you, to really think about this nitrous, that word, this ordinance, to really protect the community and, and the people in it. Right down here on, by Highway 36, about eight years ago, you had a woman that ran off the road, hit a man, and killed him. She was inhaling, gives me chills, she was inhaling nitrous oxide. She had stolen my car. It was my car that did that. She had stolen my car, and her and her passengers were inhaling. She passed out, which is common when you're doing nitrous oxide. Didn't even know what she did. Woke up, and the gentleman was dead that she had hit. It's a terrible, terrible drug. It also is not readily detected. It's a gas, and so you have to do blood gases to know that you're doing it. The chief cannot go out and give somebody a test that says, oh, they're, they're high on nitrous. We need to arrest them. And I'm out of order, again, apologize. Thank you for listening.
Michelle, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Does the county have a total ban on theirs?
Yes.
So can we get a copy of the, of the county's ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like, I'd like to see a copy of that, because I think we need to have a total ban, our ban on it also.
I will add that your city manager came to two or three meetings with other city managers, myself, Public Health. Mike Wilson also was on the ad hoc to talk about this ordinance, and I believe that your city manager has a copy of that.
Okay.
Any other public comment?
So this isn't for adoption or anything, but I would like to see an ordinance come back with a total ban on there, so we can get this done ASAP.
Are you directing the, are you, are you making a motion to direct the city manager to return to city council with an ordinance banning all nitrous oxide use, similar to the county of Humboldt, in a tobacco retail license ordinance?
That's exactly what I'm doing, yes.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to direct the city manager to return to council with an ordinance with a complete ban on nitrous oxide, as well as tobacco retail license ordinance. For a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Very eye-opening, again. Okay, so now we come to our city manager's report.
Mayor and council members, last week I attended the RCR PD meeting, and the Eel River Valley Community Foundation slash McLean Foundation did receive their soils reports back from Ontoveros. And a pool can be built on the spot between ERV and the senior center and without a substantial foundation. However, the pool can only be about five feet deep, deeper pool than that would require more substantial foundation, substantially increasing the cost. So this is good news. ERV-
the cost. So this is good news. ERV and McLean are now waiting on cost estimates from Ontiveros for site prep, the foundation, pool, and support structure. And so the cost estimates are likely to take a few months. And so the RCRPD meeting for November is canceled, and likely the December meeting is canceled. And just as a reminder to your city council, RCRPD will likely be the vehicle for a benefit assessment to help fund pool operations, assuming all of these estimates that come from Ontiveros are still affordable to the McLean Foundation. So this is an exciting, exciting news to hear that a pool is potentially feasible. Also in works is the permanent local housing allocation dollars. The city of Fortuna is eligible for formula allocation funds from 2022 and 2024. About $160,000 is just sitting out there waiting for us to apply. You have to use 40% of your funds for owner-occupied housing. That's a somewhat difficult program for city staff to run, and so we would look to potentially contracting that out. But if you contract that out, and that would be with the county of Humboldt. So we have to have that conversation with the county of Humboldt. But we would enter into an MOU with the county to receive those dollars on behalf of Fortuna residents, and then they would serve a certain number of Fortuna residents with those dollars. So we'll be bringing back more information to your city council on that. And housing and, the state Housing and Community Development Department run that program. And another update on the housing and community development front is that the housing element implementation that has been before your council is in progress. And so public hearing noticing has gone out for Tuesday, October 28th, for that Planning Commission meeting to adopt amendments to the zoning regulations that will help us comply with the housing element that was adopted several years ago. So we should hopefully avoid fines from housing and community development. One of the last updates I'd like to give you is that the strategic and general plan through listening sessions, that is well underway. Staff interviews are nearly complete. It's anticipated that community interviews will be completed at the end of November. And then hopefully, an update on your process, on this particular process will come to your city council in December. And then we will have workshops on all of this listening session data that will inform the strategic plan and the general plan updates in 2026, hopefully early 2026. Conversations continue with staff on operational improvements with the River Lodge, and there'll be another staff report coming to your city council. And as you're aware, I did do some work on a mobile home, on an urgency ordinance, creating a moratorium, moratorium on mobile home space rent increases. And that concludes my city manager report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for city manager? Okay. Are there any future agenda items? None. Okay. I think we've mined the public comment section, so we can move on to council reports. Councilmember Diaz.
Yes, mayor. I attended the Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting last month, and we had a presentation regarding data centers. And with the increase of artificial intelligence usage by everybody doing those quick searches on their phones, the conversation arose around the fact that those data centers are just draining the grid for energy usage. So as the energy usage increases by those data centers, then the demand for that energy also increases, which will raise prices. And RCA is trying to stay afloat with competing against PG&E rates. So I think that that, although it's beneficial for the general public to have that much information available, it's also something that we need to think about, the amount of energy that we are using by using those artificial intelligence protocols. So it was an interesting presentation. I'll be happy to share that if anybody's interested in it. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. I've read a little bit online about that, ironically, online. Mayor Proten.
I have nothing to report.
Well, I have a follow-up on plifclendenens. We did do a, we did just have apple harvest, and it was well-attended. There was an, a event in the park even that was really well-attended. Unfortunately, the wind came through and kind of blew it away in sections. They lost a few tents, a inflatable maze, and, but they had followed, towards the evening, they had a concert that was really well-attended. A lot of people showed up for that. The band thought it was a great event, and so it may be something that comes up again next year, and there may be some events happening in the park related to that. Next Thursday, I have an HCOG meeting, and I don't have, not seen the agenda for that yet, so I can't tell you what's on the books, but I guarantee you that there will be some housing-related items in there, because even though it's a transportation, county transportation hub, the HCOG is also the repository for the regional housing needs analysis. So we handle that also. So that's all I have to report at this time.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.